Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the bills, everyone have a chance to look at all of this? Motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion.
Second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the November eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll sign it.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Thanks for being here, George.
It's my pleasure. I want to participate still a little bit.
Heard from Eric?
Uh, no, I thought Eric Weiss was supposed to be here to present the fire department budget twenty twenty-four, so he may be walking in any moment.
It's a decrease for us anyway, so.
Yes, ours went down by-
Not much of a question.
Yeah, ours, uh, ours went down by one hundred and three dollars and fifty-nine cents. I believe this is based on population. So overall, the change, net change is only one thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars. And the, I believe the majority of that was due to the price of diesel fuel for the operations of trucks. So we'll, we'll come back to this. Hopefully Eric will show up. If not, we'll go over it and then have a vote. Their, their fiscal begins January one, so we need to process this. Oh, we're still waiting for our lease to be signed from Nortera. Our board okayed that lease, the language, and Courtney brought it back to them at Nortera. And evidently they've got their fire, our key, going over it now. And hopefully they'll be signing off on that very shortly. There he is. Eric.
Amen?
You're right on time.
Am I?
Thanks for, we, I briefly gave a little bit about the budget, but I'll let you take right over.
Yep, absolutely. So before I get into the budget, I just kind of want to give you a little update as to where things are, where things kind of ended off, end of twenty twenty-two budget-wise. So we kind of started this, you know, let's kind of leave more, a little more transparent to the board as we go along. So don't have the end of the year this year, but at the end of twenty twenty-two, we had a budget that year of three hundred nineteen thousand and change. We ended up spending two hundred ninety-three thousand and change, so resulted in a balance of twenty-five thousand three seventy-three, and typically what we do with that money, we roll those funds into one of our replacement plans. So we have three primary replacement plans that we have to cover. One's a major equipment, covers things like air packs, so our SCBA's, thermal imaging cameras, AEDs, any of the, our hose, so any of the major ticket items that we have to replace it, we want to have, have funded reserve. We also have a vehicle replacement fund to cover replacement costs. The goal of that plan, I would say fifteen years ago when we developed it, was to finally get out of the, out of the scenario of taking out a loan to pay for trucks. Unfortunately, the way vehicle prices are right now, I'm not sure we're ever going to get there. Prices of trucks have tripled in the past two, three years. So, so we have that account. We also have a facility maintenance account to cover things like a roof, garage doors, floor coatings, pavement repairs. So, so we have those three accounts. Ultimately, right now, in those accounts, we have, so our long-term maintenance account, we have a hundred, basically a hundred twenty-one thousand. I mean, I'm just rounding, a hundred twenty-one thousand in our long-term maintenance. The big ticket item we got coming up, I would say next year and within the next ten years, one is we need to get our truck bay floors coated and painted. And the other big one that's going to be coming up, I would say the next ten years, is a roof facility. So we're really kind of saving the funds through those two items. Our major equipment savings, we have a hundred and five thousand. In our vehicle replacement, we have eighty-four thousand. So again, those, those funds are really what they're designated for. Every year, we do go, we do go through those plans, kind of reevaluate priorities, and, and kind of make sure that they fit. The one thing we are going through right now as a department is our vehicle replacement plan. I've asked the membership to think honestly, what do we really need long-term with our fleet? It's a touchy subject because no one ever wants to make changes, but I think we just need to be realistic with manpower and the way things are headed, but also with the mindset of what's the community really need. So, so what I'm hoping in the next two or three months to kind of get that vetted out, and then ultimately, once we decide as a department what our goal is, update that plan and probably go back to you guys with kind of an overview of what that looks like going forward. You know, it may end up being, if the department says, hey, we should really keep really everything we have, realistically, that would result in an increase in the budget on that line item for years to come, again, to kind of, to kind of offset. But to me, that's going to be a discussion I want to have with the village, with the town. Again, it's the mindset of, hey, this is what we feel we need, but also, you know, what do you feel the public needs and wants? So, so that's in the works. We also have our, what we call our memorial fund. So this fund is really used, it's all donations. So it's people that donate money to the department on an annual basis, people that donate to the department when a loved one passes away. So these funds are put into an account, really set up to cover something new. We try not to make it set up where it, where it covers a budget item, where it covers, where it covers something the membership wants, you know, on their, on their free time, so it doesn't pay for our parties. So we, we kind of cover that for, hey, if there's a new piece of equipment or something that we really don't normally have, that we feel will benefit the community, it's kind of what we kind of set these funds aside for. So we really haven't spent a lot over the past few years. We do have roughly ninety-two thousand dollars in that account. Again, so in the past, for example, you know, we bought, we bought AEDs one year when that was kind of the new, you know, new upcoming thing, you know, years ago. That was an item we said, hey, we don't have, it was never budgeted, you know, it's, it's new, let's, let's use some of these funds for that. So, and then the other primary account we have is our social, our two, sorry, other primary accounts are two social accounts. We have a, a social account that pays for our annual banquet. If we have, you know, food every other month at the firehouse for our members, you know, golf tournaments, that kind of stuff. We have roughly thirty thousand dollars in that account. And the other account we have is our social building maintenance, which is forty-four, forty-five thousand. So where those funds come from is through our building lease. So we, we lease obviously part of the building to the town. When the town makes those payments, we take a portion of that, put it away in this fund to cover repairs to the building on the back half. So, so if you look at our building, you know, there's, there's doors on the side. We look at, the back half is covered by our, our social funds, so the funds that the town pays us. The front half is really taxpayer-funded, so any, any, any repairs we make on the, on the front half of the building is taxpayer-funded. Okay? So again, just a brief overview for you as to where those, where those stand. From a membership standpoint, as of, this was October, since then we've gained one, one new active member. So we had eighty-seven, or we had eighty, sorry, eighty-eight total active members, sorry, total members. So this will account for forty active members, so forty members that, that do not have what we call our twenty-five years of service yet. These are members that can run calls. We have six active reserve members, so these are members that were active, however, because of, they didn't meet training requirements previous year, they were recorded, put into a reserve status. We have twelve active life members, so someone like me who's been in over twenty-five years in the department, we get an active life status. Still have to maintain your training to run calls, but essentially because of life status, you can never get kicked out of the department as a retired. We have twenty life members, so those, those members, again, can never be kicked out. They're really just the guys that have put years and years in the department, and, you know, we cherish them and, you know, welcome them on any occasion. We have five, what we call restricted members, so these are members that are under the age of eighteen, so between sixteen and eighteen. They really can't do a lot of duties, but these are the up and comers, the, the guys, the guys and gals that we want, and they're going to fill our shoes. We also have five, what we call honorary members, which are related members that we've appointed. They really don't have any responsibilities, but members that have done something for the department over the years. So, for example, the Julies were honorary members because of, you know, the donations they made at the department over the years. So again, eighty-eight total members. Where I want to go with this, I guess, is yes, we have eighty-eight members. We have, but we only really have fifty-two active members, okay? So people who run the calls. But when you also look at that, the reality is, I would say half of those are really the people that do the bulk of the, bulk of the work, just the nature, you know, I'll point myself, the guy's picked me once in a while, but I'm not around to make calls like it used to be, you know, busy with my work-life and this kind of stuff. But I do the business side, but I don't make calls, but making it work. So, so, so that's kind of our membership update. So from a budget standpoint, so where we are this year, we're requesting a point four or five percent increase. Ultimately, some of the line item changes, we'll go through building maintenance, those costs have just increased over the years. So these are some of the, these don't, these aren't fundamental, so our, our long-term account, but these are some of the more basic repairs, you know, repair costs and just anything you do nowadays is ridiculous. So we've requested a thirty-five hundred dollar increase related to that. Dues, we've really kind of dropped some of the, the association dues we have, so we, we dropped that by two hundred fifty dollars. Fuel, obviously, you know, those costs have gone up. From an insurance standpoint, we have seen a minor increase in our fire and medical insurance, a major decrease in the workers' comp through the county. And then really, the only other increase of this year is related to the vehicle replacement. And again, those are our funds that go, that really go to cover our equipment, our vehicle costs. Typically, those just get rolled into that savings account easily. So, so overall, it's one thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars. We're looking for an increase, and you'll see at the top of the page kind of the breakdown. And I know a lot of you already know this, but just, just a reminder, so, so Monroe County, we're really kind of set up in an annual contract with them, so it's already set in place what the percentage is. Town of Riga, the two percentage really kind of a, kind of an annual request from them to kind of say, within that range. Sometimes they're lower than the percentage that we ask you. This year, obviously, they're, they're at a higher percentage, typically as they were asking from, from the village and the town. So ultimately, we look at those two numbers first, and whatever's left over is really the town and village of Virgen, and that gets divided amongst the two entities by assessed valuation. So every year, you'll see those percent changes vary because the assessed valuation changes. So unfortunately for early this year, the bulk of the increase, you know, between, for all the increase, how the village goes to town, the rest is a, a eat-up in the contract with the village. Any questions you have for me?
No, I'm just, you know, thank you enough for what the, you know, the department does for this community, and, and I got to say, I applaud you for your transparency with all your accounts, like, just, you know, just total transparency, it's really good.
I used to know, but I remember the stories of the days of old when we'd come in here and not provide anything, it was just lies. Just, that's what it is. There's, you know, here's what we use it for, and, you know.
So we applaud you for that.
Eric, excuse me, Eric, what are you making on that ninety-two, ninety-two thousand? Do you have a CD? Is that-
So we do have CDs, and that's one thing we actually did last month, our board, actually, one thing we talked about was, was re-looking at our investment strategies. We got to, we also got to make sure we got cash to cover, you know, truck costs when they come. We can't take all of it, but we got to make sure we, so it's going to be a balance, but, yep.
Are you guys allowed to use N-class?
I think we are, honestly, I need to look into that, because I remember hearing that, I, I talked about it, I'm assuming you guys are-
Yeah, we got into it, the interest rate's really good, and it's liquid.
I think we are.
It's over five, it's over five percent right now.
Okay, it's just, probably the week ago. Yeah, I'll, I'll dig back into that.
Eric, not a budget question, but membership, what's the trend going, is that, is this a typical, you know, I mean, are you good, bad, how are we doing?
We, we've been doing pretty good. So if you look at countywide, we're on the good side. We're, we're maintaining the membership. We do have, honestly, we've, we've done good attracting new members. There's other departments, like Leroy, for example, they were really hard times, you know, staffing trucks.
There's enough to staff what we need?
Yes. Now, at certain times of the day, obviously, you struggle. The ambulance is still struggling. So that's, that's one of the hot topics right now is, you know, what's the path forward?
Actually, yeah, a community member asked me about our ambulance service and just what that looks like nowadays, and that type of thing, because they had gotten an ambulance from out of the, from the county.
Yep.
You know, who just wanted to even have it anymore.
Yeah, so we, we have it, but it's just a, and we, I think we have twelve EMTs right now, don't quote me on that, but around there. And again, depending on the time of day, but being an EMT is tough. So, so the harder part is attracting and maintaining that is, like, a fire, a fire call, I would say typically is fifteen to thirty minutes. Okay, if it's, if it's a minor accident, you're just checking on something, you're back. You know, if you roll on the ambulance and you're transporting, you're two, three hours every time. And it's, and it's draining on, with the limited EMTs you have, they just get burnt out, and they get to the point where it's just tough for them to, to run on these calls in the middle of the night, maintain the work-life balance, and- so it's, it's a struggle, and that's really a county, that's a countywide thing, I would say, whatever ambulance those are left. That is why the county is working on, I think, I think the contract's in place, whether, whether they got a contract with LVA now in Mercy, where the counties can actually chip in money so they can provide additional staffing. So I wish I had, if we had a good answer, we struggle with it. You know, it's just, but it's just, was it all volunteer? You can't force people.
It's nice to have our own, you know, for sure, but it's, you know, as a value.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're really appreciated, I can tell you that from the public side over here, I'd like to say thank you.
It's nice to hear, thank you.
Is there any other update from the, at the county level on the EMS?
So, and so that was one of the things that came out of that was, was the county working the contract with Mercy. So that came out of the study, they, you know, they kind of recognized that, you know, department ambulances are, are a tough to staff. They also recognize that, you know, it's really the only, if you look at near state law, it's not required per state law. There's nothing that says we have to have an ambulance service in Virgen. Fire, yes, you have to maintain fire protection, but there's nothing per state law that talks about ambulance service. So I think it's something the county realized, it's a countywide problem, and that was one of the recommendations in the study, was, was coming up with some other system. And one of the alternatives was paying Mercy so they could have additional staff rates. They're going to, so they're going to put one in Stafford'sburg, one of these networks. So the intent is that with those funds, they're going to be able to pay for more people, also providing increased wages for those people. So that's the goal, very similar to LVA, Leroy, voluntary ambulances, they're going to try to come up with additional incentives. So that came out of it. The other thing that came out of it that's already kind of been implemented is some, some dispatch changes, something you guys aren't going to see, but something we kind of see internally. And dispatch changes, where it's, where it's helping is the way they're reporting calls to us, the way they're tracking the calls with us. So as, as calls come over, we get updates on our phones. So it's giving the dispatchers a little more duties to give us updates. The other thing, it's involving more reporting on their end. So one of the deficiencies they realize is that, you know, when they went to the county dispatch and asked for all this data, there was big, big blank spots. So, so this will help us identify, you know, by tracking more data, it allows us to make change, more changes throughout the county. So we have identified, we sat down, we've identified seven primary things out of all the recommendations. So we kind of funneled it down. I know the village provided your feedback, I know what we felt. So there's seven primary recommendations that we're kind of going to focus on next. Recruitment retention, one of them. Another one is, for example, related to coming up with duty crews. So duty crew is by meaning, hey, we're going to, so right now we have an east, a central, and a, and a west battalion. So, so departments are kind of grouped into battalions, truly just for meeting and, and having some training. But some of the mindset is, hey, let's get each battalion to come up with people that want to, want to volunteer for this task force. We would, they would, they'd get on a sheet, and we would, for example, let's say on, on Monday, you know, we would staff an engine in Virgen for the day. So we have, we have four people in Virgen for the day that could respond anywhere in our, in, in, in the eastern battalion. You know, Tuesday it could be in Leroy. You know, so, so that's some of the mindset is, let's come up with, you know, can we come up with, I know it's a little, little initial burden to the volunteers, but there's still a lot of young guys that they love that stuff, and they have the ability to do it. So that's one of the items we're going to kind of vet out, is how do we, how do we implement that. Hope is, it's going to, it's going to be a long road, I think. As you know, change is tough, like I said earlier, and it's tough to give those people the change, realize what the flaws are, but work in progress.
Any other questions? All right, well, we've got it under our new business, so we'll, we'll note on it.
Sounds good.
Okay, Eric, thank you, coming in, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I have to go.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
I love the transparency. We never used to get that.
They flat-out said we're not going to tell you again, or something.
I know, if everybody will do what we want, and, you know.
All you get to know about is the man can-
Yeah. Okay.
Jenny used to go around and around with them.
Oh, yeah. Back to my report, the annual tree lane ceremony we had out here, we, we estimated there was probably three hundred parents and kids out there, so that was a huge success. And all those thanks go to Courtney, Renee, and Barb here in the office. And for, you know, everyone else that volunteered their time. So it was, it was a good night, and everybody had a good time. Tennessee County Legislature voted to give a voluntary distribution of funds to municipalities, and we received fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars through this allocation. It's mostly sales tax revenue over projection, you know, they took in more than they projected and made a disbursement to towns and villages and the city. So we, we were awarded fifteen thousand, and it sure helps.
Do we ever anticipate that, or is that just, so it's never really talked about when budget time comes around?
It's, well, it's over and above. We, we have a budget figure that we use.
We do.
This is over and above that.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, because the county gives the exact amount, sales tax-wise, if they give us than-
And then whatever-
If they, if they go over and if they have surplus, then they kind of give it to us, which is really nice because they don't have to.
Back to the radon test kits, I contacted Tennessee County Health Department because I, I saw online that they were giving them out free of charge to municipalities. So I contacted their office, and she said she would bring them out, and she brought out a total of four. So I was, honestly, I was hoping to have a hundred of them here to give out to the residents, but we got four of them. And we'll, we'll see that they get dispersed out.
Everyone's done?
I believe so, according to-
Yeah, because you have to return the whole thing to the county for testing.
I did ask her if there was any funds available, if someone did, the property did test positive for remediation. And she said, no, at this time, there's no grant money available for that. And I said, the other question I have as a homeowner, is it a mandate that if it tests positive over the limit, that they have to have it removed, you know? And she said, no, it's not strictly up to the homeowners, once they find the results, what they do with it. So in other words, the health department can't, you know, come in and say, hey, you got to get out of your house. It's not like that, so I figured that might deter a lot of people from wanting to even take, you know, use the test, so. But she said, no, that's not the case, so. We did hire our new employee, Peter Depay, is that how you say it, Depay?
Depuy.
Depuy, okay, he's working out very well, so we welcome him. And he's settling in nicely into the DPW there, getting a good feel for everything, so it's good to have him on board. Sewer, there's nothing to really report, everything's running smoothly at this time, knock on wood. And electric, I live in safety class, they took down the military banners, they were up and down Route nineteen here. They're now in storage at the American Legion. They're, they're not the property of the village, so they, we take them down now, and now storm over there. So come spring, when they go back up, we'll go get them again and put them back up. Other than that, they, they've been doing some little bit of tree trimming here and there, and then, and they did all the Christmas decorations with the tree, you know, bucket truck, having to get up high in the areas and install all the Christmas decorations. Our electric shutdown, I think, went pretty well, national grid scheduled outage. Power actually did come out earlier than- Our electric shutdown, I think, went pretty well, that national grid scheduled outage, power actually did come out earlier than, you know, what was forecasted, so, and we figured they had some flood time in there, pilking that, uh, they would get it done sooner than they did, so. All in all, I think it went pretty well, uh, they made the necessary repairs. So, uh, that's good. Courtney, what do you got?
Uh, the only updates I have to my report is, uh, we finally have a date for the generator, which is, uh, the nineteenth, December nineteenth. They're coming out and should have it operational.
Oh, okay, good.
Argonese coming out and with, uh, audits controls, so they should have that, uh, that's a date, the nineteenth.
Let me just, let's, let's say a little about that. The generators for our lift station, when the power goes out and automatically comes on, up to this point, we've always had to go get a portable generator and, uh, and reel it down there, and the guy would have to stay there and keep starting it up, shutting it off as the flows came up and down. So now with this generator in place, we'll eliminate all that, so it's definitely going to be a great asset. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, the other one is the five-fifty, uh, the old five-fifty left on the, uh, watch block today. It's going to be two weeks from today.
That went with the plow and the sulk were on it, so. Is that it?
Yep.
I don't have a report from Karen, do you?
No, I, I, I had to get one from him and put it on the agenda, but I didn't, we're seeking one. Yeah, I did, uh, thank Todd and Mike for helping at the tree-laying ceremony.
You're very welcome, it was fun. Yeah, it was a good time.
I could not do a whole lot, so I really appreciate you guys doing a lot of work there.
And Mary Ann.
Yeah.
No, I said, a lot of volunteers, BBCA was there helping out.
Everybody's happy.
FFA.
FFA, you know, so, the school, the kids. It was good.
More cocoa next year.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to go up with something else.
We were about to get killed.
We might have to get our own caravans, or, kind of, I don't know.
I say buy our own. Okay, is there a motion to accept the officers' reports?
I have a motion to accept the reports.
Sure, second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's?
Is there something that went out about, uh, holiday light contests? Or is that like?
Yeah, we put on Facebook, and, uh, they, 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 they came to us, um, after we already did the electric bill. So, we kind of put it in the dad, or the newsletter, so we put on, uh, Facebook, and, uh, I don't know how they're, they're, uh, advertising otherwise. We have it up on the window, so hopefully they get enough people to make it worth it for them.
Did the kids?
I don't know what they're doing in the, in the town or anything, or it's just the village.
Is that the kids from the school?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it somewhere.
I saw it too.
Students get drunk driving.
Yeah, very nice. All right, trustee concerns, Emily?
No.
Good. Todd? It was good, huh? Okay, good. New business, our park grant, sorry to say, we did not get the park grant. I wrote in my report, they received a hundred and ninety-seven eligible applications requesting over seventy-three and a half million dollars. And they only had twenty-six million dollars available for distribution, so not all the eligible projects could be funded. So, we'll continue to pursue this grant, uh, on a yearly basis, we'll just keep submitting it every year, and, uh, hopefully get it down the road. Sometimes it takes more than one year. When we submit, we'll tweak, tweak the grant and send it back in, and hopefully, uh, get better results next year. But this, that grant's offered every year, so. As far as the other grants, uh, we haven't heard anything back on the Empire State Development Grant that we submitted. We're still waiting to hear back on that, that would, uh, aid us significantly for our, uh, substation upgrade. So, we're, uh, waiting here on that. We're still waiting to see if Oxbow closed the deal in the industrial park. I believe it was supposed to be, it may be the twentieth of this month, they have their board meeting, and then.
They're up there doing core, core drilling right now.
Okay.
All different spots.
And, uh, G E T C should be getting back to me then and, uh, let me know where we stand with that. We, uh, submitted a go art, community art grant, uh, that's for summer concerts, uh, we haven't heard back on that also. And we plan to hopefully have three concerts in the park this coming summer, so. And, uh, we did receive the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation grant for, uh, it's an engineering planning grant, and that was in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to deal with inflow and infiltration, so we were awarded that. And we, Emily and Courtney, I know, submitted, uh, paperwork for the summer recreation program, so thank you, Emily and Courtney, thank you for that. That's been, uh, submitted to the county, and that would be for the twenty-twenty-four Summer Recreation Program. And that grant is in the amount of three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, so hopefully we'll get that. All right, next thing on the agenda is the Virgin Fire Department budget. Eric gave us a good explanation of his budget, but, uh, it looks very reasonable. Any questions from the board members? No, if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept this Virgin Fire Department, uh, their, uh, budget for the twenty-twenty-four year. The village's amount is eighty-two thousand six hundred and four dollars and thirty-five cents. So is there a motion to?
I think there's a motion to accept their proposal.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried? Well, when you, when you think of the services they provide for what we pay, right, Paul, you know?
Yeah, it's a bargain compared to three miles away, I know that.
Yeah, so, you know, so, so many thanks to our fire department. Okay, uh, nobody's here for personal or the floor, an old business? It's not on here, but the, the other, the other old business that comes to mind is we still have not received any from National Grid for an interconnection agreement, so.
I'm really dragging their feet.
Yeah, evidently, it's not too important to them.
It took me eight or nine months to get mine finalized when I was super kind of cheerful, so I wouldn't be surprised if it takes that long or longer with you folks.
Okay. All right, with that, then, uh, I would, uh, make the request that we go into executive session for, uh, employee union negotiations.
I'll make a question.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.